आरंभ कालंगिली ये नू सबिकल इरुद्धा के वेदम सुटीकाट गिरत
The Bible been points that in the beginning there were seven churches.
इधि पोंड्रा नूट्यकनकाना सबिकलो, इलावटल नूट्यकनकाना जनंगलो इल्लादे ओरु काल
It was a period of time where we, like the present times, we do not have hundreds of churches and hundreds of people.
ओरवेले सबिकल इरुद्धरकलाम
Perhaps they might be churches.
हा, देवन अंगीकिरित्त इन्दे ये नू सबिकल
But what God ratified were these seven churches.
मेरीपुरतल यरंडे, मूंद्र अधिकारंगिले इन्दे ये नू सबिकल कुरित्तदाने, नेलवरंगल आवियानवराल सुटीकाटपडुगिरदे
In Revelations chapters two and three, by the spirit of God, the state of these seven churches are pinpointed.
हा, नान मर्बड़ीयूं चोलुगिरै
I repeat.
वेरे सबिकल इरुद्धरकलाम
There might be other churches as well.
मेरे सबिकल नाह, उन्होंग पलविनंगिले देवन आरिंद वरिले इरुद्धु ओलियम से इरुकलाम
The meaning is, they might have known God in diverse manners and they were ministered to God.
अनल परलोकम अंगीकिरित्त, तूथय अनिपिना सबई, इन्दे ये नू सबिकल मात्रम
But what haven't ratified and sent message are these seven churches?
यरंडे एबेशु सबई
One, the churches' offices.
मठ्यंड्र सिमरनासबई
Next, the churches' seminaries.
अद्दत दाग पेर्गमोस्ताग
The churches' programs.
अद्दत तियतेरासबई
In the church of Teatro.
अद्दिक अद्दत सारदैसबई
The church of Charles Sardis.
अद्दिक अद्दत पिलदेल्बियासबई
Church of Philadelphia.
अद्दिक अद्दत लवोदिकियासबई
The church of Laverdisha.
इन्दे ये लिलूम, ओरे ओर सबई मत्तूम, ओर नेरेवाना ओर सबई आग कानपट्टदे
But among the seven, there was one church which was full.
इन्दे ये लिलूम, यरंड्रन, देवनाले पाराटपट्टा ओर सबई, अधिकुरित्रन, इप्पोर्डरन नान उंगल्कु चोनै
Even among the seven churches, there was one church which was much appreciated by God, and therefore the church I was talking about.
निङल मठ्यार सबिकली वीटलु भी पडितु पारिंगल
You go home and read about the other six churches.
अंद सबिनुडय कुराइकल सुटीकाटपडुरकु
The shortfalls of the other churches have been pointed.
अदु मनंदिर्म्बवेनुमेनु ओर कोरिकै वैकपडुरकु
And also, a request was placed that they had to repent.
अदु मनंदिर्म्बाविटाल, इन्ना न्यायतिर्पु इन्ग्र ओर न्यायतिर्पु कुडुकपडुरकु
And if they fail to repent, a judgment will also pronounced for them.
अनल, इन्दे पिलदेल्बिया इन्ग्र ओर सबिकमत्तूम, कुट्रमुं चाटपडुल्लै, न्यायतिर्पु कुडुकपडुल्लै
But only this church called Philadelphia was not accused, neither was it pronounced judgment.
इधि अधै कान्बिकरद
What does it signify?
सबईकुल्लूम, ओर देविकल वाल्वाई वाल्गरे ओरु कोटम उंडे
And there is a group of people who live a divine life even in the church.
ये नू सबिकलिले ओर सबई
Among the seven churches, one church.
अंद सबिक्की कत्तर चोलुगिरात, नान उनकु तिरंदा वासले उनकु मुंबाहा वैकिरै
To that church, the Lord says that "I will keep before you an open door."
कत्तुडय परिसूत नामत्तुक महिमूंडावदा
May God's holy name be glorified.
मनंदिर्म्बावसीय मठ्य, मनंदिर्म्ब, सरियाना ओर मनंदिर्म्बले अनुभवम आकी कोण्डा ओर सबई
A church which does not require repentance because each and every day, it has been habitual to repent.
कुराइकल तेडिक पडितालु कंडुबिकमुडियार
So even if you try to find out some mistakes, you cannot find.
अंद सबईए नर्स्वाचीपट्टा ओर सबई
And that was a church which had a good witness.
अंद सबिले आवियानवर तेडिपार्तुंगुडे, ओर कुराइ कंडुबिकपड़ा मुडिया विलाई
So even after the spirit of God doing a diligent search, it cannot find a fault in the church.
कारणम इन्न
What was the reason?
अंद सबिनुडय पैयर पिलदेल्बिया
Because the name of the church is Philadelphia.
इन्निकी अनये सबिकलकी पडिपट्टा पैयरगल सूटपडुगिरदे निङल वलकत्रे पार्कल
In the world, we also find that many churches are called by this name.
सल ऊर्गुलुकु कुड़ैंदे पिलदेल्बिया इन्ग्र पैयर वैकपडुरकर
Even certain cities, certain places are called after this name, Philadelphia.
इन्रिकी अंद एडम इरुकरदे
Even today, that place is there.
अंद एडत्तुकु पैयर अल्लाह साहिर
That, the name of the place is Allah Sahib.
अबिन्न इन्न अर्थो, अल्लाह साहिर, अबिन्न देवुडय नागरम, अबिन्न इन्निको अंद एडत्तुं इरुकर
So even today, that name is there, the meaning of the name is the city of God.
अनल सरियाना अर्थम इन्न
But what is the exact meaning?
आवियानवर अंद सबिक अंद पैयर वैत्तुक कारणम इन्न
What was the reason spirit of God has given this name to the church?
हा, नामुगुड़ सबिक के पैयर वैत्तुरकर
We also have name for the church.
इन्न पैयर
What is the name of her church?
हा, पलय पैयर इन्न दे
What was the old name?
सिलन पेंटिकास्टल मिशन
Silon Pentecostal Mission.
अबिन्न इन्न अर्थो
What does it mean?
इलंगिले इरुद्धत तोडंगनुनाला, अंद नाट रुंडय पैयर अदले तोटीकोण्ड
So because it was started from Sri Lanka, the name was there.
पेंटिकास्ट इन्न दे, एशुकृष्य उइरोड येलिंबी ऐंबदावदे, मरित्य उइरोड येलिमना ऐंबदावदनाल, अंद्रिक परिसूतावी अनुपपट्टदे अनम्बिलान नम्मडे सबिक इन्न पैयर वच्छो, पेंदे कोसेनालील परिसूतावी वंदुनाले पेंदे कोसे इन्न वैतो
So it was after the death and resurrection of Jesus Christ on the 50th day, the Holy Spirit was sent, and therefore it is called as the Pentecost. That's why we call the name as Pentecost for our church.
हा, वेलूरले 36 सबिकल, 36 डिनॉमिनेशन इरुकर
In Velor, we have about thirty-six denominations.
ओर बुक को वाइयु पड्चे
I bought a book and read.
36 सबई इधुकुम अधिगमागर इरुकरदे, अधिगमार इरुकना, बेटीकड़मरिवच्चुरकर वालाइ इरुकर
And there are thirty-six plus churches denominations in Velor, there are small churches which is beyond thirty-six.
अबिन्न अना करेक्ट दाना नान चोलुरदे
Is it not so?
हा, निङ अंद बुक वनावांगी पड्चु पार
You can purchase that book and read.
वेलूरडय फुल हिस्ट्री अंद इरुक
The entire history of Velor is there.
हा, मुलंगाल युथोने, अंद बुकुकु पैयर
And that book is named as War and On knees.
अदुकु पैयर वंद मुलंगाल युथो, अद, वेसमीवतल रिलीज पन्नांग, अंद बुक वेलूरे पत्तिया मुत्सुम
So it is a book which describes the entire history of Velor, and it is called as मुलंगाल युथम.
हा, अंद बुकल निङ पड्चिंगल, नाह 36 सबई इरुकर
If you read that book, you can find thirty-six denominations.
निङ वोड़ सबिकल पेरिगी पोइरुकिंग
So even today, we have churches in abundance.
हा, तू बाइ तू, अबिन्न ओर चर्च वच्चन नाह ओर
And there's a church called Two by Two.
तू बाइ तूनु तुनिकु कुड़ पैयर वंदिच्छे कुजनालिक मुनाल
And there was a material called as Two by Two.
अब यान तू बाइ तू त्वची इन्केदा, वर्णिशना, एशु रंड्रंडु पैराय अनिपिनार, अनल तू फाइ
So when we ask them why they have named the church like Two by Two, they said "Jesus Christ sent disciples in two worlds."
इलंगिले प्रश्न इवंद्दुरुदे
When there was problem in Sri Lanka
नम्मडे सबिकल तमिलनाटकले पलाडंगिले ताकपड्ड
So our churches, many places in Tamil Nadu were attacked.
इधि इलंगय सिंगल सबई इन्सोल
And because they called this as a Sri Lankan church.
अदिनिमित्त सबिकलुकल नम्मडय इंडियाले यूपलक कोलपंगल वंददे
Consequently, we had lot of troubles, lot of commotion in India.
अदुकु पैयर, अदुकु पिन्डु पैयर एब्रिमात्तपट्टदे
Afterwards, the name was changed.
ताप पेंदे कोसस सबईनु तमिलले चोनवने, अनेकर तमिलनाटक पेंदे कोसस सबई नान अनेकर
So when we say the Pentecostal Mission in Tamil, many people think it's Tamil not the Pentecostal Mission.
अद इंग्लिश टुडे वार्कदा
It's an English word.
The Pentecostal Mission.
The Pentecostal Mission.
अबिन्न इन्न अर्थो
What does it mean?
चलिंग
What does it mean?
अदम पेंदे कोसस सबई, अबिन्गिरिंग The Pentecostal Mission अबिन्न चोन्ना, इधि दान पेंदे कोससे सबई, अबिन्न इन्न अर्थो वेर ओन्नुमेन इन्ग्र यादे, पेंदे कोसस सबक कड़यादे, अदम पच्चयाना इंग्लिशिंग दे सरियाना तमिल
The exact meaning of the English term "The Pentecostal Mission" is that there is no other Pentecostal church other than this. This is the very Pentecostal church.
अबिन्न अना करेक्ट दाना, यूनिवर्सल त्रोत्तुकु मुनाले इन्न अर्थो इन्न अर्थो टी हैची, दीन पोडवा, ओर सन दा, ओर मूंदा, अदुकु दा सन, दा मूंद सोल अदेमरित, अदानाता ओर इंडिपेंडेंट बासो चोना, नम्मलाला मुट्टलाकितांग उन्हेलारुसेन्दे, यान यूंग मत्तुन्ना इन्न अर्थो करेक्ट सिलेक्ट पन्नी अडिच्छांग, दा पेंटिकास्टल मिशन अडिच्छां, अब अबिन्न इन्न अर्थो इवन दाम पेंदे कोस, वेर यार इन्ग्र यादे, पेंटिकास्टल कड़यादे इन्न अर्थो
So talking about the universe, it's mentioned as "the sun, the moon", and likewise, other people also commented saying that these people have taken the right name, that they are the Pentecostal Mission, and there is no other denomination which can be called after that name.
अनल पिलदेल्बियानी अब पैयर वच्छांग
But why was it called as Philadelphia?
अबिन्न इन्न अर्थो
What does it mean?
सगोदरस्नेघम इन्न अर्थो
Brotherly love.
सबई इन्न दे चोलुगिरदे, सगोदरस्नेघतनाले पिन्नी पिनकपट्टदे
The church is something which is mingled among with brotherly love.
इन्द सबिले वंदित्त बरगे, सगोदरस्नेघम इल्लेना, इन्द सबिले देवन उन्हेकोंडु वंदुदिन्दे नोक्कम नेरेवेट्टपड़ा विलाई
After coming to the church, if you fail to have brotherly love, then the purpose with which God has brought you to this church is not fulfilled.
नम्मले इंगियो रुनो
We were somewhere.
हा, नम्मले इंगिकोंडु वंदा
He has brought us here.
नम्मिंगिकोंडु वंदुदिन्नोक्को, नम्मुडय सबिनुडय, सरियाना देवुडे तिट्टम इन्न नाह, सगोदरस्नेघ
Why, what is the purpose God has brought us to these churches, that we should have brotherly love?
पेंटिकास्टल चोन्ना अभिषेक
When you talk about Pentecostal anointing.
अदानाता नम्म अभिषेकतुका अधिकमुखियतु ओकोडुकर
That is why we give more importance to anointing.
अदु वोले सबई इन्द चोलुम्बुरुदे, अंगे सगोदरस्नेघम तेव
Likewise, when you talk about church, brotherly love is mandatory.
इंग सगोदरस्नेघम इल्लयो, अंद सबई नेलित्राद
Where there is no brotherly love, the church cannot continue.
सगोदरस्नेघम इन्न दे, नाम पायर्चिविकेवेंडिया ओरु मुखियमान ओर अनुभव
Brotherly love is an very important experience, we should experience every day in our life.
सगोदरस्नेघम इन्न दे, दान मिगुम मुखियमानदे
Brotherly love is very, very important.
यान
Why?
नामेलारु पलातरपट्टा जनंगल
Because we are diverse kinds of people.
पलक कुड़मंगिले परंदा वर्ग
We are born in different families.
पल मोलिगल पेसुगर
We speak different languages.
पल कलाचारंगिले वारंदा वर्ग
We have been brought up in different cultures.
नम्मडय रत्ततले वित्यासंगल उंड
And there are differences in our blood.
नम्मेलार्यू ओरये रत्तमागम आच्चुगर
But he makes all of us as one blood.
अब नम्मेलार्यू इंगियो वंदित्त बरगे, नम्मुकुले येत्त तालुगल वरकुडाद
Therefore, when we come here, there should not be any differences, partialities between us.
एप्पो येत्त तालु वरु
When there will be ups and downs between us.
ओर मनिंगुकुले येत्त तालु वरुदना, सगोदरस्नेघम कोरैंदा दान दे वरु
So when there is differences among, or differences of opinion among people, brotherly love when it depletes, it happens.
एवरेयर पदिमूंद्र ओढ्रु चोलुगिरदे
Hebrews thirteen one says.
सगोदरस्नेघम नेलित्रुक्क कड़वद
Let brotherly love abide.
अबिन्न इन्न अर्थो
What does it mean?
सबईकुले सगोदरस्नेघम एप्पोरुद्धुम इरुकवेन
And there should be brotherly love always in the church.
अदुले मामीसीगु कलक्कुडाद
And there should not be carnality mingled.
अदुले पिरिविन्येगुलुके एडंगुडुत्रकुडाद
We should not make room for divisions.
अदु कुजनाल इरुद्धु तुमर्बड़ि, अदु कोरैंदुपोहुं कुडाद
It should not abide for some time and then wax away.
सगोदरस्नेघम उंडे सरियाना अर्थम इन्न
What is the meaning of brotherly love?
ओर अफेक्शन इरुकवेन
There should be an affection.
इधि कुरित्त रोमर पनिरंडु पत्तले आवियानवर पेसुम्बुरुदे
Concerning this Romans twelve ten, the spirit of God says.
रोमर पनिरंडु पत्त
Romans twelve ten.
सगोदरस्नेघतले ओरुवर मेलोरुवर पच्चमायर सगोदरस्नेघतले ओरुवरुकु ओरुवर पच्चमायर
Be kindly affectionate one to another with brotherly love.
हा, ओर सगोदरनुडु उनकु ओर अफेक्शन इल्लेना, नी पात्ता तोतरमुनुवे, ओर शिरिपे, अंद स्माइलिंग अवम पोन ओन्ने टक्नु उन्होडे बड़िया बिड
So if you do not have a brotherly affection with others, you will just smile, you will say "Praise the Lord", but once the person departs your smile, immediately it goes off.
इबन नम्मडय अन्नबल्ला सेयरकै तनमान अन्न
Today, our love is artificial.
अबिन्न अना
Is it not so?
पात्त ओन्ने वो शिरिपि शिरिपांग, टप्पुन निंट्र
The moment they see, they will give a broad smile, immediately it goes away.
अदु सगोदरस्नेघम अल्ल
That is not brotherly love.
सगोदरस्नेघम करदे, अदले पच्चमायनी इरुकनो
So when you have brotherly love, you should be affectionate.
अदानातु ओर सगोदरन पातिकपट्टान, नान नी पातिकपट्टदु बोले उनारु
The meaning is, if a brother is affected, you should feel as though you are affected.
अवकिला उल्लंद्दान, अयोव अवम उल्लंद्दान इन्ग्र ओर परिदेवीपु उनकु इरुकनो उल्लंद्दान, चचच नम्म पला, अबिन्न पोइरुकुडाद
If he falls, you should have the sympathy that he has fallen down. You should not say that "Oh, he's fallen, that's okay", you should not go your way.
इनिके एतनवरुकुल सगोदरस्नेघम इरुकर
Today, how many of us have the brotherly love?
इनिके अनये इरुके, फ्रेंडशिप इरुकदे, अना अदु उन्मयाना फ्रेंडशिप कड़याद
Today, many people have friendship, but it's not true friendship.
ओर सिलरुके सगोदरस्नेघम इरुकरदे, अदु मामीसीगमागर इरुकर
Some people have brotherly love, but that is carnal.
अदु सोंदंगल, अंद कुरिकपट्टा ऊर, इलावटकुरिकपट्टा येनो, कुरिकपट्टा अंद जनतोड़दा अंगुल्क इन्न इरुक निङ वनाइप्पे पोटमुरुंजयुने, पातिंगलाइप्पे सोलिडानाल, निङ वो जो शार अर्कल कोटमुरुंजयुने निङ पातिंगला, करेक्ट अंद अंद ग्रुप दा, अंद अंद पैयन, अंद अंद बोन्न, अंद अंद पेरेंट्स दा अबिन्न जाइंड आव
So they mingle based on their religion, based on their languages, based on their community, based on the place where they hail from, and likewise, so after the meeting is over, you can find them forming groups like this.
अवग सापडपडुनाला, अदेमरितम पोवांग, अंग साप्ता अबिडु पड्वांग अना, इंग ओर पत्तु पुरियातुमा वंदरपा, अगाबिन्न ए, पुदुसा परकपरकपातित्ते, पास्टर यार, पास्टर एब्रिपुई पाकरदे, इन्न इन्न तेरियाम अवाइबिडु पोइटेर
But these people even to go, have food, they will grow in groups and have food, but there'll be some, about ten new souls would have come, they'll be wondering, they'll be clueless, not knowing how to meet the pastor and so
ओर आल्टक केटरकर
They've asked one person.
कुजनाल इंग सबिकिनिंग वंदमार रुन्दिच्छे, अदु पर वारवेल
You have come to this church for something, but after that you are missing.
अब अन्चोना
He said.
कुजनाल इल्लना, एट्यूमासा वंदमा सबिक
Not little time, but I came to your church for eight months.
एट्यूमासा वंदे, ओर ऊलियकारन, ओर ऊलियकारिय, ओर विश्वासियो, नी यार अबिन्न एट्यूमसी इन्न एने ओरुतंगुड़ा इन्सिंज्डल्ल ऊलियकारन के कले, ऊलियकारिय गे कले, विश्वासिले ओर आनो पन्नो, इला पलय मूत्य यंदवर विश्वासियो, नी यार अबिन्गिरो ओर क्वस्टिन इन्सिलाय इन्या, के कले, इन्द सबिकिनायंग अपोनु, विसारिपट्टा ओर याद
I've been attending churches continuously for eight months, but none of the workers, none of the believers, either old or young, none of them have enquired about me, and why should I go to this church? Because nobody cares for me.
उनकिंग ओर आल पुदुसा अर्का, मुरुंजयुने स्तोत्रम, ब्रदर, सिस्टर एब्रियर इंग सिस्टर्स, सिस्टर्स अकटा पोरो, ब्रदर, ब्रदर अकटा पोर
So after the meeting is over, if you find someone new, the brothers should ask the brothers "Who are you?", and we have to wish them, and sisters should do likewise.
वांग पास्टर पाकल
Come, let's meet the pastor.
इन्न निङ साप्तु पोग
So you have food and go.
इप्पुडी नम्म विटकु वंदोंगला यार दाविसारिंग नी इंद विटले ओर मेंबर
You are a member of this family.
हा, नी दान उनकु कुट्टुकोडु विसापडपडु
So you have to take care of the person to have food.
अब उनकिंग इंग ओर आल परिच्यमायु वित्त
So therefore, one person is acquainted to him.
अद्दत वर वंदु ओन्ने पाप
Next week, he'll come and meet you.
हा, उन्हेलाका नी चेपिक
And you can pray for them.
इप्पुडी तांग सबई इन्ग्र दे, वालर्चेडे
This is how church will grow.
अद पति ओन्नुमेन तेरियाम, नी बाटु पोइटुन्दा, अवग बाटु कोरोंग, अवग बाटु पोइटेर
So if you're ignorant of this and go your way, then they will just come and they will go as they
उन्हुड़ी अन्नबिले मायम अत्थतन्मय, सगोदरस्नेघतले मायम इरुक्कुडाद
And there should not be any hypocrisy in your love.
ओन्न बेदरे, ओन्ने इरुवती इरण्डै पार्कुम्बुरुदे
First Peter chapter one verse twenty-two.
ओन्न बेदरे, यरंड्र इरुवती इरण्ड आगयान, निङल मायम अत्थ सगोदरस्नेघमुल्ल वर्गलागुबडी, आवियनाले सत्यत्रके कीलपडिंदे, उन्हुगलात्तमाकले सुथमाकी कोण्डवर्गलाय इरुकरबडियाल, सुथ्य इरुदैतोडे ओरुवरिल ओरुवर ऊक्कमाय अन्नबुकुरुंग एब्रिय, इधि ग्रीय सब्जेक्ट
This is a great subject.
हा, इन्न चोली इरुकरदे
What is mentioned here?
सगोदरस्नेघतले निङल मायम अत्थ रुलाय इरुंग
You should be unfeated in the love of brethren.
हा, अदुकु कारण इन्न
What is the reason?
निङल सत्यत्तुके कीलपडिंदे
Obeying the truth.
उन्हुगलात्तमावे निङल सुथमाकी कोण्ड
Purifying your soul.
सुथ्य इरुदैतोडे ओरुवरिल ओरुवर अन्नबुकुरुंग
You got to love one another with pure heart fervently.
यंदे एडत्तले इमे, सगोदर अन्नबिले पॉयसन कलक्कुडाद
At no point in time should you mix poison with brotherly love.
अबिन्न इन्न अर्थन
What is the other meaning?
मामीसा अन्बई पलक्कविक्कुडाद
We should not encourage counter love.
हा, अन्नबुंगिरदे, अद ओर उनिदमान
Love is something pure.
अद ओंदे, परिसूततोड़ इन्न इंद दान पैयर इन्न दे, अन्न
Love is something connected to holiness.
सर्दन
Is it not right?
देवन परिसूत
God is holy.
अवरुकि अंद पार, अवरुडे नानैत्तले इन्न ओरु पक्क इन्न दे, देवन अन्नबुल्ल
So on the other side of the coin, you find God as love.
इन्द रेंडले यो, अवर एब्रिपट्टावर
In both of these, what is his nature? He is a consuming fire.
अब उन्हुड़ी अन्नबिले मामुसुम वरुल्लन उलय उडाद
Therefore, in everybody's love, carnality should not mingle.
अवग इंग ऊर करंग
They are belonging to
अवग इंग जादी करंग
They are belonging to our tribe.
अवग इंग सोंदो
They are my relatives.
अबिबी पोइ पोइ करेसले सोंदमावे आइडुआ
So they will say like this, and they will become a relative itself.
अबिबी पोइपट्टे, करेसले वो बोन्न तारिया, वो पैयन तारियाम
And later on, they will say that "Will you give your son or"
इप्पुडी पोन नाला, दाम पेंटिकास्टल तनुडय विलाय ये लंद्दुवट्टगिरद
Because Pentecostal is gone like this, it has lost its strength.
अदुनुडे शाइनिंग केटु पोनुदि इदनाला दान
This is the reason why its magnanimity is gone.
कत्तुडय परिसूत नामत्तुक महिमूंडावदा
May God's holy name be glorified.
इंग चोली इरुकरदे, उन्हुड़े अन्नबु मायम अत्थ दाखु इरुकवेन
Here, it is mentioned that your love should be unfeated.
ओन्न बेदरे मूंद्रम अधिकारम, एट्यूमासनात्ते पार्कुम्बुरुदे
First Peter chapter three verse eight.
निङल इरक्कमुल्ल वर्गल, इबडी पलकारिंगले सोलिटे, सगोदरस्नेघमुल्ल अलागुम इरुकवेन
So mentioning so many things like "You should be very full, courteous", he says that "You should have the love of brethren."
उनके इरक्कम इरुकलाम
You might have mercy.
मन उरुक्कम इरुकलाम
You might have compassion.
यनक्कम इरुकलाम
So you might have
ओरुमनपट्टावनाय इरुकलाम
So you might have one mind.
अना इविगलुकु मत्तिले, नी सगोदरस्नेघमुल्ल वनायुम इरुकवेन
But among all these, you should have the love for brethren.
उन्हुड़े अन्नबिले मायम इरुक्कुडाद, यमात्त इरुक्कुडाद, वंचिच्चिरकुडाद
So you should not be unfeated in your, you should be, you should not be feated in your love, there should not be deception in your love.
एबेशीयर मुदलाम अधिकारम इन्न चोलुगिरद
What does Ephesians chapter one say?
वल्लगत तोटतुकु मुन्ने, कृष्ण उक्कल देवन नमित्य एदकाकतेरिंदुकोण्ड
Why has God chosen us even before the foundation of this world?
अन्बिल परिसूत
That he is holy in love.
अन्बिल परिसूतन तेव
We need holiness in love.
अनबिलानाता उन्हुडे सगोदरस्नेघम, मायम अत्थ दाखु इरुकवेन, सगोदरस्नेघम नेलित्तुम इरुकवेन
That is why your love should be unfeated, it should abide.
ओरुवरिल ओरुवर अन्नबाय इरुपदे
Loving one another.
इधि देवुडय कर्पन
This is a commandment of God.
उन्ने नैसीकरदे बोले, नी मठ्य उन्ने नैसीपदे
You got to love others as you love yourself.
इरण्डाम पेदरे मुदलाम अधिकारते पार्कुम्बुरुदे
Second Peter chapter one, when we read.
ये अवसनम इन्न चोलुगिरद
What does the seventh verse say?
देव बक्तियोडे सगोदरस्नेघतयु, सगोदरस्नेघतोडे अन्बयु कोटी वलंगुंग इधि ओन्नोड़ ओन्न मिक्सायुन्बुरुदा, टेस्ट डिफरेंट अर्क
So if this mingles one with the other, the taste will be different.
वेरू उपनिंग सापडुंगला
So will you eat only salt?
चलिन वेरू फुलिपस सापल्लाम
So can you eat only sour?
अद करेक्ट अंद मेशरमेंटले, अंद रेशियोले मिक्साकुम्बुरुदा इन्न दे, अद टेस्ट
So when it is mixed in the right ratio, then there is a good taste.
अदानाता ओन्न बेदरे, रेंडु बेदरे, यरंड्र आर ये ले, निङ अंजल रुन्दे दे पाकल
So that is why in second Peter chapter one verses five, six, and seven, we see this.
विश्वासतोड़ दायरियन चेर
So with faith, you got to add
दायरियतोड़ न्यानम चेर
With boles, you have to add wisdom.
न्यानतोड़ इच्छय अडक्कन चेर
With wisdom, there should be temperance.
इच्छय अडक्कतोड़ पुरमय चेर
With temperance, there should be patience.
पुरमयोड़ देव बक्ति चेर
With patience, godliness.
देव बक्तियोड़ सगोदरस्नेघम चेर
With godliness, brotherly kindness.
सगोदरस्नेघतोड़ अन्बु चेर
With brotherly kindness, charity.
ओर समयल दानग इधि ओर समयल
This is one cooking.
अबिन्न अना करेक्ट दाना
Is it not so?
हा, निङ तन्नी कोडिके वच्चे, अदुके परगे अंद पक्को वंदु ओन्नुनाय इन्सिनो करेक्ट मिक्स पन्नीटे वर्न
So when you boil the water, when it comes to a particular state of level, then you'll put everything one by one.
करेक्टन निङ गोनु निङना, नाला
So if you bring it up brightly, then the taste will be good.
इधि यादियादु ओन्न मिसपन्टिंगल, नाचे, तोलंजे पड्विंग
If you miss something or the other, then it's lost.
ओरनाल ओर पुरुष वंदु मनवीटके, अनका हलवा संजीकुड़न चोन
One day, your husband asks the wife, "Please make me some halwa."
अब अवसोना, ओके, ना संजीतर अंद बुकुमुट्टु वाइंड वंदर
She said, "I will make it, but just please purchase this book for me."
अवु वाइ ओर बुक वाइंगुड
And he bought the book.
हलवा
हलवा
हा, अहा संजीतांद, सबोर्डरी संज
She beautifully made the halwa.
हा, अवेला संजी मुर्छुने, वर्नदार
And after everything was ready, he came.
सुपर अर्क
He said, "It was wonderful."
पुरुष निकर्तु कुड़तांग
She gave it to the husband.
अवर वायले डट्टो वच्चार
He kept it on the mouth.
वच्च परगे वाय तरक्कमुरिल
Afterwards, he could not open the mouth.
मेल वाय ओढो नजिच्चि पोइ कप्पन ओटीच्चि
So his mouth was stuck to the upper
अद परगे उनकु किलय वर्ला, मेलय वर्ल
And afterwards, he was not able to open the mouth up or down.
बायंगर कष्टपट्टा
He was struggling.
एब्रिय वेली एड्ड
Somehow, he managed to open.
ए, नी इन्न नी बुक वाइंड दाना, ना बायंगरमा संजीर अब्रिय, अदिल इरण्डु मुनिमिशम कोडिके वडुंगल, मूनिमिशम आर वडुंगल अवसोना, इंद बुकले इन्न संजी चोली इरुक अद अप्पुडियाना संज
So he asked, the husband asked the wife, "So you said if you purchase the book, you will do everything", and she said that "Whatever is written in the book, I have done that."
अब अन्चोना, अब इंद बुकल दान तप
So then he asked, "Is it wrong in the book?"
ओके, नयर अंद कड़के पिटांग
Okay, he went to the shop.
अंग पोइ के
He asked.
इबडी संजो, करेसले वायले ओट्टू ओट्टी, नाम पडादु बाटु पोटिटे, इन्न याबुक चोन
So he asked, "What is this book?" We did ask for the instructions given in the book, but my mouth was stuck.
अवंचोना
He said.
अंद बुकले इन्न एलिर्निशन
What is written there in the book?
सैदु पार्न दान चोलिर्निश, साप्तु पार्न उन्होड़े चोन
It says, "Just try cooking it", does it say that "Try eating it"?
अंद बुकनी पड्चु पार, मेल इन्न अर्थो इन्न अर्थो सैदु पार सैदु दान नी पाकनो, अद करेक्ट वर्दा, वर्ल नी साप्तु डिंग वंद सगर्नर पन्ना कुडाद
So it says that, "Look at the tagline of the book, it says 'Try it', it does not say 'Try eating it.'"
अदेमरित उन्हुड़ी विटली उन्हुगलान संजी काट्वांग
Likewise, people will cook in your house.
पडिकलना, निके, इन्न इन्न डायरेक्शनला उन्हुगला वैकिनुम उर्च
So if they don't like you, they will just take a chance by that.
अना अदेन नयरत्ल
At the same time.
अन्बु रुन्दा, ओप्पल अदला निङ वाद्साप्डेयर
But even if you don't have salt, you will keep on eating it.
अदेन नयरत्ल, पसी इरुन्दा, पसी इन्न शयद रूसी, अरिया, अव्वाड्ड साप्डेयर पसी इल्लन चोन्ना दान, इधि एदुक काप्पड़ी संज इधि एदुक काप्पड़ी संज, इधि नल्ला इल्ल, इधि कलान कारण पसी इल्लद
At the same time, when you are hungry, you will eat whatever is given to you, but when you are not hungry, then you will find fault with each and everything.
अदानाता तमिलले चोलरा, पसित्त बिन पुसी, अब दान नी टेस्ट रिस्ट कलन, चंडा पडाम नी वाड्डुके कुडुत्त ओन्ने साप्ता, अदम वायर नंद वंदे पोइटेर
That is why in Tamil, they used to be saying that "You have to eat food after you become hungry."
अदानाता निङ वीट वोकांद पड्चु पार रेंडु बेदरे, यरंड्र ये, ओन्नोड़ ओन्न मिक्साय, मिक्साय वर्नुबुरुदा, कृष्ट्विन पूरनम वरुगिर
In second Peter chapter one verse seven, "Go home and read", so when everything mingles in the right proportion, then the love of Christ comes in.
अंद अंद रेशियोला अद चेंद किट्टे वर्न
It should be mixed in the right ratio.
अबिर वर्मुरुदे, फाइनल वर्मुरुदे, कृष्ट्विन मनवाटी इन्ग्र दा वंद
So when it comes in the right proportion, finally it comes to the stage of being called the bride of Christ.
कत्तुडय परिसूत नामत्तुक महिमूंडावदा
May God's holy name be glorified.
इंगिनाम पार्कुम्बुरुदे, इंद सबई कुरित्त आवियानवर पेसुगर
Here, the spirit of God talks about the church.
यान इंद ओर सबिकमत्तु तिरंदा वासल वैकिर
Why does the Lord keep an open door for this church?
नम्मल अनेकरुक ओर केल्वी, अनके इंग बोनालु मुट्टीटे इरुकदे, कदव भूडीरदे, अनके एदु सिंजाल वायकल इबडी ओर क्वस्टिन इंग आपादी वर्ग इरुकर
So more than half of the people here have the question that whichever I go, place I go, wherever, things, whatever, I put my hand into, the door is shut before me.
अंद वरुको ओर नामम इरुकर
And the Lord has a name.
अद इन्न दे
What is the name?
सावीदिन तेरवुहोलाय उडयाव
The one that holds the keys of David.
अमेन, पूटकुडादुबडी तेरकरवर, तेरक्कुडादुबडी भूटुगिर
So he is the one that opened it, that no one can shut, and shut it, that no one can open.
इप्पुडी पट्टा देवता दान नाम इन्निकी और्षिप पन्न
We are worshiping such a kind of God today.
पिन्न एप्पुडी नम्मुकु पोगर अडंगलां कदव भूटपड्डुगिर
It's then, why, what is the reason that wherever we go, the doors are shut?
इधि कुल मरंजिरुकर सत्यम मर्दलीत
So the truth behind this is denying.
इन्रिकी मैसेज मर्दलीयाद
Today's message is "Do not deny."
एंद शून्यले लो ओर विश्वासिय काइला बाइबल तुकित्त परगे, सागर वरिके अवम मर्दलीकेवे कुडाद
A child of God, after he takes up the Bible in his hand, until the time of his death, he should not deny.
एप्पुडी ओरतं कल्याणं कट्न बरगे, कटेश्वरिकी सागर वरिके अवरान इन्न चोन अवरान इन्ड ओड़े मनवीन चोन वना चोन मतान
Even after a person getting married, until the death, point of death, he would say that "This is my wife."
सागर वरिके अवरान यार हा, मनवी
Until the time of his death, it is the wife.
अदु वोले, नी इन्न इक बाइबल तुकुनयो, अन्नेल रुन्दे नी मर्दलीकेवे कुडाद
So likewise, until the, from the time that you have taken the Bible in your hand, you should not deny.
इंद सबिनुडे तन्मय इन्न
What is the nature of this church?
इधि ओर ग्रीय बेलसालियाना सबक कड़याद
So this is not a very strong church.
अद ओर सिंसुन बोले, इलावटकांडाम रुद्धुकुत्ता बेलन उल्ला सबई कड़याद
This is not a church with strength like Samson or the Unicorn.
पुरी तां उन्हुके
Do you understand?
इल्ल बोलियात वारियो, ओर जयजांडी फिगर उल्ला ओर आलुन कड़याद
Or it is not a man, a man like a gigantic figure like Goliath.
अंद सबिकिरुम्द बेलन एब्रिपट्टदे
What was the strength of the church?
चलिन एब्लो बेलन
What strength?
कुंजन दम बेलन
A little strength.
अना अंद कुंज बेलत्ले, अद देवन अमर्दली अम जीवन कुडुतदे
But with the little strength that it had, it did not deny God, but laid down its life.
उनका अलिकपट्टा क्रिबक कुंजमार इरुकलाम
The grace given to you might be little.
उनका अलिकपट्टा विश्वास गुंजमार इरुकलाम
The faith given to you might be small.
उनका अलिकपट्टा परिसूत गुंजमार इरुकलाम
Holiness given to you might be very trivial.
अद कुंजत्रल नी उन्मयाय इरुकनो
But you got to be faithful in the little what you have.
उनकु वसदी वायपुगल देव गुंजमार कुडुत्रप
The Lord might have given some conveniences to you a little bit.
हा, यदो साप्तु के तेवल कुडुकलाम
So whatever food you require, the Lord
यदि साप्तु के अधिगमागर ओर आयर रॉ एस्टा कड़गिरमारी देवन कुडुकलाम
The Lord might have given, provided you maybe a thousand rupees more than your requirements.
इल्ल साप्तु के नी तरुमार्चमुल्ल वनाय इरुकलाम
Or perhaps you are a person struggling for even daily food.
यान इप्पुडी ओर पादेले देवन पुल्लेले नडत्तुगर
What is the Lord lead the children in such a path?
इधि अवम उन्मयाय इरुकराना, अबिन्गिरो ओर टेस्ट
It is a test to check whether he is faithful in what is given.
इन्द टेस्टले नी पास आहन
You got to pass this test.
अब्डी पास आइटे ना
If you pass likewise
उन्हेक अनेगत्तिन मेल अधिकारी आगा अवर वाइप
And he should make you a ruler upon many.
इप्पन नी अनेगत्तुक अधिकारी आमारी
Now we have become a ruler over many.
इंद अनेगत्तल नी उन्मयाय इरुकुम्बुरुदे
When you are faithful in the many.
इन्नुम अनेगत्त कारिंगल उन्मेल, उन्हुड़े उन्मेल विश्वासवाइत्त देवन कुडुकर
So the Lord keeps his faith on you and gives more things, more responsibilities in your hand.
मर्दलीतल इन्न दे विलची इन अडयाल
And therefore, enjoying everything is a sign of fall.
हा, इनिके अंद सबिकल लां ओरु तरंदा मर्दलीतदे
So because those churches just denied once.
अना नम्मल अनेगत्त ओर निमडमु मर्दलीकर
But many of us deny every moment.
मर्दलीतल इन्न दे तनुमात्तति अडयाल
So denying is an experience of struggling.
ओर विश्वासी मर्दलीकर
If a believer staggers.
अवं दे स्पिरिचुअल स्टैंडर्ड इन्न शयदे, कोरय अपोदे, अबिन्न अर्थ
The meaning is, a spiritual standard is depleting.
ओर ऊलियकारम मर्दलीकर
If a worker of God is denying.
अवुडय ऊलियतले, अवन यरंगियत, तालवे नोकी यरंग आरमिकर
And he is heading downwards in the ministry.
उन्हेक त्रासले वच्चे निरुत्त पाकर नी मने, मने टेकल, उप्पार्सिन, नी त्रासले निरुत्त कानपट्टाय, नी कोरया अवन अनाय कानपट्टाय
So he places you in the balance, and he weighs you, saying that "Mene, mene टेकल उप्पार्सिन", which means that you are weighed and found wanting.
अना इंद सबई पति चोलुर
But talking about this church, he says.
उन क्रियेगले नान अरिंद्रुकर
I know your words.
उनकु कुंज बेलन इरुद्धो
You had little strength.
यन नामत्ति नी मर्दलीयाम
However, you do not deny any
यन वसनत्ति नी काईकुंड बुडिन
Because you kept my word.
नान उनके दाविकर तिरंदा वासलाय नान वैकर
I placed before you an open door.
अद एंद पिसासो, सयवनयो, येवलो, मनशनो, संदरमो, मंदरमो, एदुम पूट्टमुडियाद
No witchcraft, no devil, no magic, no spell of magic can stop it.
इनिकी नम्मुकु सलकारिंगल, पट्टुपटकुम हूडिरुन्न
So today, certain things we try to do.
इनिकी नल्लार्नमार्कु, नालिकी फेलोर
So what we do might appear good today, but tomorrow it's a failure.
अद ओरवेल वन जपत्तल तरंदा अर्कलाम, इल्ल नी वो मोहिर्चिले तरंदा अर्कलाम, अना देवन तिरंदा इन्न शयमाट्ठार पूट्त विदमाट्ठार
Perhaps it is opened by your endeavor or by your efforts and prayer, but if the Lord opens the door, no one else will shut it.
यान
Why?
अंद तेरवुहोला यात्र
The keys are in his
अवर केल
It was in hand.
अवर पूटितरना, अवर दान तरक
If he locks, he should only open.
अवर तरंदारना, यार दान पूट्न अवर दान पूट्न
If he opens, he should only shut it.
अप्पुडी पट्टा देवने, नाम वैत्रुकुम्बुरुदे, निङल यान मर्दलीकर
When you have such a God, why should you deny?
इंद मर्दलीतल इन्न दे, इन्निकी कृष्टव वलकत्ले, ओर सर्व साधारणमाहम आरिवड
Denying is becoming very habitual, very normal among the Christians.
पेदुर, पेदुराय इरुक्कु वरै, मर्दलीकेवेल
Peter, as long he was Peter, he did not deny.
अना एप्पस सीमोना मारन, अना अप्परुदु मर्दलीपुण्ड
But the moment he became Simon, he started denying.
इलावटल, मर्दलीतोडने अनुडय पैयर यादा मारिच्छे
Or in other words, once he denied, his name became
पेदुरुड़े, पेदुरुड़े, पलय पैयर इन्न
What was the old name of Peter?
सीमोन
Simon
सीमोन इन्न अर्थो
What does it mean by Simon?
नानल
It's weed.
हा, इधि दान अनुडय पलय लाइफो, अवुडय पलय पैयरो, अवुडय लाइफस्टैलो अबिदार
And that was the nature of his old life, that was his name as well as his lifestyle.
अबिन्न इन्न
What does it mean?
इंग वन्दा इंद सेट चांजिक अंद सेट वन्दा, अंद सेट चांजिक काठुत्तुकुन तन्नीके एत्ता मारी, आडिडेर इरुकर नानल उडय तन्मय
Read a bull rush is something which will move with the face of the wind, with the direction of the wind. If something has to happen this side, he will wave this side. If something has to happen the other side, you should go the other way.
अदानाता पैयर वैक्यम्बुरुदे
That is why when you keep
कत्र उनके इन्न पैयर वच्चार
What did the Lord name him as?
नी ओर कल
You are a stone.
नी ओर पार
You are a rock.
अदानाता उनकु नेम करेक्ट वच्चार
That is why he gave him the right name.
नम्मल उन्हुकुड़ा, पुदुसा पैयर लां कुणिकलाम विकर ओरुत्तनुकु बुरियाद कत्ता अद अरब, अरब नेम अद ग्रीकला अब्रिवरुदे, गिब्रल अब्रिवर इंग तमिलले अब्रिवरुने, अवुनुकु मेथर अबिन्न अना
So people are giving names today, that they say it's an Arabic name, it's called a Greek name, so even they don't know the meaning of it in Tamil.
कृष्टिन्स कुड़ा न्यूमेरिकल स्टाइल वैकर
So even Christians are also naming after the numer
हा, इबडी वच्चा, अबड़ि, अबड़ि वच्चा, इबडी लाम मातिट्टे वर
So based on numerology, they want to keep the names like this
अवर बुरियमान
Beloved ones, it's wrong.
नम्मडय पैयर, पारयाग मार
Our name should become a rock.
अवुडय लाइफ, ओर उर्दित तन्मय मात्रुदे, दान कत्र अनुके पेदुर, केबा, पत्रोस, पीटर इदलन्डे मुडु अर्थम इन्न दान नी ओर कल, नी ओर पार
So the meaning of the Lord, the Lord giving names to Peter as Kefaz and Patrose, that is called Peter, the meaning is that he should be like a rock, a stone.
पेदुर वर्कुम्बुरुदे, अवुडय स्टेटमेंट इन्न
When he was Peter, what was his statement?
मठ्य 26 35 अवुडय पेदुर वर्कुम्बुरुदे, अवुडय वार्ता इन्न
What was his word when he was Peter? Lord, even if I have to die, I will die, Lord. That was the words of Peter. But what was the words of Simon? In Matthew's Gospel. Chapter 26, verse 17. See what his state is now. Concerning this in John. John, chapter 21. Verse 15. Now both the names are given, Simon, Peter. Earlier it was Simon. Until the time he denied, his name was. After he denied, his name was. Simon, Peter, now it has come to a fifty-fifty state. In the same verse, his name has become. So dear Reed. That's how it has become. Because when you deny, your life is changed. A test call, a denying will happen continuously in Christian life. We cannot say when this test will happen. It will keep on coming. This test of denying will come to a believer as well as a worker until the point of his death. I will explain more clearly. If you go to apply for a driving license. And they will ask you to get some certificate. Medical certificate. So after you provide the certificate, you will get the license. So they will give you about twenty years span. And once you become forty. Afterwards, they will give you only for five years validity. Why? You have to get a test certificate for your eyes. So as your age increases, the validity of the certificate will decrease because they want to ensure that you have a proper eyesight to drive. Likewise. So you have to undergo a fitness test every time, every moment in the Christian life, even until the last moment, you have to undergo this test. Immediately you will say, why should the Lord permit this? It's not so. So through your eyes, you might appear to be a saint, but you have to find out what is shortfall in your life. Until the time that you fall sick, you can speak boldly about divine healing, but until when that sickness comes in, then that's the test of standing in faith. So why did the Lord afflict the people and lead them? And what do we read in Deuteronomy? The Lord says that to know your heart, that you might know yourself, I have led you in this path. Deuteronomy 8:2. You should first of all understand what is weak in your heart, and therefore you have to understand that I am weak in this aspect and I have to correct it. Matthew's Gospel, chapter 26, verse 34, the Lord very clearly says that your standard is very weak, not just once, but three times you will deny. The Lord pinpoints to him, saying that your Christian life is only in words, but it's not in strength. But in the next verse, he says that even if I have to die, I will not deny. But only God knows what was his standard. So that is why that he might understand the Lord, take him to the path of denying. So some people, if you find, they will find fault with others, accuse others. There is no need anything. So when some person is sleeping during the message, he will say, pastor is speaking like this, but this person is sleeping. One person came and told me in YMCA meeting. So one person came in the YMCA meeting and told me. So one person came and sat by me and he was a believer. So from the time he came and sat down, he was only fidgeting with the phone, so I seeing him, I lost the presence of God. Likewise. So he will say that pastor is speaking like this and he will just wake up the other person. The moment you tap the spirit of slumber will come into you, the other person will be clear. Most of them are like this. Many are complaining about others' children, saying that this boy is standing there, he was speaking over phone, and this girl was standing there and doing like this. So but later on, whatever they have spoken, reverses and come back to their own children. For about one hour and forty-five minutes, he was preaching, and all these one hour forty-five minutes, he was just playing with the phone. Finally, when everyone was asked to stand up, at was that point in time, he put his phone in the pocket. That day, the subject was. So pastor, that day, I told that, so all your boundaries should have holiness. After hearing this, he cried for about fifteen minutes. So I rejoice, saying that at least at this last moment, he was sanctified and he went with crying. So until that point of death, for you and me, the Lord will keep this test of denying, even the devil will conduct this test. So even if he scored a ninety-nine percentage, yet at least this one person will not fail, the devil will try to keep a test for that. But even if you have a little strength, you should not deny. If you deny, what will happen? You can deny here. But when you go and stand before the Lord in the presence of God, the Lord will deny you. Matthew 10:33. So today, for whatever reason, you might be denying, but still when you go to the kingdom of heaven, there the Son of God will deny you before the Father, saying, I do not know him, he is a worker of iniquity. And therefore, whatever activities of denial that you do in this earth will reflect directly in heaven. What does Saint Paul say about this? 2 Timothy. Chapter 2. The 12th verse. 2 Timothy 2:12. If you deny him, he will also deny you. Therefore, in the aspect of denying, we should be very careful. You should not deny your parents. You should not deny the church. You should not deny the truth. So first of all, if you deny, the first thing that will happen to you is the son will deny you. Secondly. If you deny, you are called the liar. Thirdly, the Bible says if you deny, you are the Antichrist. So come with the Bible, with pen and notebook. So if you are a person who can buy hard, you have to stand firm. 1st John, chapter 2, verses 22 and 23. What is mentioned there? If a man denies Christ, he is a liar. He that denied the son, he is Antichrist. And who that denied the father, he does not have the father. In these two verses, three accusations are made. When a person denies Lord Jesus Christ, he becomes a liar, he is called the Antichrist, and he does not have the father or the son. So what does it mean by denying? Failing to live according to the truth that you have heard, it's denying. So setting your life apart from the truth and the doctrine that you have heard and the anointing that you have received, that is called as denial. Now see how Peter denies. So he is, a woman asked. Your speech is very much similar to the speech of the Galileans. Immediately he said. Who is that Galilean? I don't know that person. How can you say that? But the Lord brought him back to the ministry and gave him the ministry. That's a great marvel. Look at him. He made an abrupt denial, saying that I do not know him at all. Next, another trial. Then he said. I do not know this man. See how simply he has just thrown him away. Then again the third one. Again he says. I do not know. And there was once all the waiting for him. Immediately it grew. So historians say. So later on, Peter became a great minister of God. Of course, he was a great minister of God, so when people see, touch his shadow or touch him, immediately they are healed. But whenever he does the ministry of healing also, when he hears the cock crow, immediately he will be troubled. So every day morning, we have a cock crowing, that is alarm. Is it crowing? He was the one who was setting up the alarm, saying, Lord, wake me up early in the morning, I should pray, I should do this and that, but when the alarm goes, then they will say that, oh, get away devil. Three times at a night. On what day? So how many, how many days? How many days? Within twelve hours, it happened. Just calculate that this is. So just calculate as twelve into three and twelve hours into three and how many years believers you were and just calculate. Just imagine. So today, how many of us deny likewise and carry the Bible along? So he that denied is a liar. He that denied is an Antichrist. So he that denied before the Father will deny. He that denied, does not have the father. When we read the fourth words of Jude. In the fourth words of Jude. What is mentioned about them that deny? They just topple the words of God. And they topple the grace. Who are they? They are ungodly. And they are the one who enter through the sideways. And they are in condemnation. These people deny God. So therefore, the one that denies, the one who creeps in unawares and one who is ungodly, he is, he does not. Therefore, the Bible says. Do not deny. So let us consider, how many times have we denied in our life? When you deny, once again. We deny holiness. We deny righteousness. So when we deny, we also set a deliverance the sin. Acts of the Apostles, chapter 3, verses thirteen and fourteen. So you have denied the holy and righteous one. Because you denied what happened. So a murderer is being delivered. What does it mean? So when you deny, then sin is delivered from you and it becomes very gigantic. Today, this denying, or the process of denying. We got to understand this properly. So about the church, it is mentioned that because you have kept my word and not denied. So whenever you deny, you're denying his name. Or you are rejecting his name. You say that I do not know. So you do not know the truth? You do not know how you should keep the faith? You do not know how you should beat your wife? So you do not know that you should not commit mistake with others' wives? Even the C S A person knows. Do you not, do not know the ten commandments? So only if we follow the ten commandments, we are the right Pentecostal. So very clearly, it is mentioned about the ten commandments. The reason is they are unable to follow. What is the reason? There is no law. So that is why when Christ came, he said that you love God, all these things shall be set free. What you do not know. So if I sit down, about hundred people will come forward to preach about denial, you'll say the pastor does not know this verse, but I will teach about this verse. So you are supposed to be teachers. You can speak in a moment. So but having known about denial, we are still denying. Yet being warned that he shall deny three times, he said, I will not deny, but went again and he come denied all three times. Do not turn the scriptures. Do not turn the word of God. 2 Peter, chapter 2, when we read. It is mentioned about a group of people who deny God. And they will just topple the words of God. 2 Peter, chapter 2, verse 1. If a person is heretic in his words, that means that he is denying. Do you understand? So when I got transferred from Chennai to Madurai. So but an ananic believer, he came to Madurai to visit me. So he was from a RC background. So there was one of his close letter who studied theology and he was just secured the degree and came out. And they also had ordained a feast for him. And they also had ordained the fees for him. So of course, he was a young boy, but he has passed through the six years of studies and he has now secured the degree. So after he was ordained, then he was brought to me, saying that if you have to do the ministry well, you have to pray from my pastor, and therefore he was brought to me. I was speaking to him for some time. It's only then after discussion, I understood that if he becomes the leader of the church, what will happen to the church? Because after little time, he said. He said, "You should not believe only the Bible, but you should also contemplate Darwin's theory." What does Darwin's theory say? What does the Bible say? What the Bible says is, "God created man out of the dust of the earth in his own image and likeness." But what does Darwin's theory say? Man evolved from monkeys. He is asked, saying, "What, why don't you contemplate this?" I asked, "Will you speak like this in the RC church?" Can you speak in a mass like this? He said, "I can speak, there's nothing wrong." Then he said to that incident where Jesus Christ converted the water into wine. Everybody was washing their feet. So he was comparing the dirty water where the feet were washed into the grape and into wine, and therefore I was wondering what he had learnt all these six years. So two or three days before I heard a news. I'm just talking about this heresy or this turning the word of God. What Job said was, "The Lord gave and the Lord has taken away." And he was refusing that word. The forty-second chapter. In the forty-second chapter, Job says that unknowingly I have spoken, and therefore he is relating this to that verse. Job, chapter two, Job says that the Lord has given, the Lord has taken away, praise be to the name of the Lord in the first chapter. Job, one. 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 Job, one.[789.18][789.22][S01. So they are just toppling the word of God just like that. They are just relating the verses which Job spoke in the first chapter and the forty-second chapter, and saying that what Job said in the first chapter, he is disagreeing with his own statement, and people are clapping hands for that and whistling also for that. So the same people, person having the same kind of spirit, as he said, do not look at the hair, but look at the spirit of God inside. So do not look at the garment he was wearing, because he was wearing glittery garments, shining garments, but the Lord's spirit of God from inside, he is lifting up the banner. Looking at these people who are wearing fluorescent garments, they were very happy, saying that pastors' priests according to our desire, and therefore they were shouting and whistling. The people having hair like gypsies, they were just whistling, saying that this is the right message today. Well, I would want it's wrong. We have to follow the words of God as it is. Today, you might topple the words as you like, according to the situation. But you cannot go and stand before the Lord. So he will not have time to discuss all sixty years issues with a person, and therefore a person of God says that, when once a person goes to the presence of God, automatically the presence will give the judgment based on his life. We should be very careful. So recently, teachers like this have come up in full swing. So even if you sit down, even if you do not shake, automatically your tissues. These are false teachers. So please go home, make your children read through over and over again, second Peter, chapter two, the first three verses. If a person is heretic about the word of God, that is denying. When we turn to Hebrews, chapter six. What is mentioned there? When you read chapter six, verses four, five and six. If a person having a standard life. If he falls down from that level, he is denying God. What does it mean? A person who is used to pray for one hour, now reduces the hour of prayer, that means that he is denying God. If a person ministers for two hours every day, but now he reduces the amount of time that he spends in ministry, then that means he is denying, is it not right what I say? Please read. Hebrews, chapter six, verses four, five and six. There is no need for others to crucify Lord Jesus Christ, but the moment that you decrease your prayer life, that you fall away from your faith, you fall away from your holy life, that means that immediately you are stepping down from your spiritual standard, thereby crucifying Jesus Christ on the cross. In the worldly stage, if you see. A person who wants to ride the bike cycle, what he desires. All his prayers are. A two-wheeler. A person going by two-wheeler, he has fallen so many times, had met with accidents so many times, before he desires a four-wheeler. So in the world, if the people look for development and increasement in their life, so why do you desire a development in your standard? Hebrews six, six, very clearly says, "When you deplete in your spiritual life, that means you are crucifying Lord Jesus Christ and you are putting him to open shame." One Timothy, chapter five, verse eight. Dear Saint Paul talks about the falling away of faith. So what does it mean by denying the faith? Taking medicine is just one portion of denying faith. So there is an experience of sublime state. So divine healing is a very important portion of the backbone of doctrine. But there is something called as the foundation. And there is a foundation. So when we first deny faith. So taking medication and thereby denying faith is the last state. One Timothy, chapter five, verse eight. You have a wife, you have a husband, you have two or three or four children, and you have her brother, sister, your parents, you have to inquire them. Why not the child go to school? Why did not the son go to school? Why has the marks come down? So why is the girl. So why she is not going at the right time and coming back at the right time? So why he is not sleeping at the right time, why he is not waking up at the right time? Why he is despising the presence of God? Why he is not giving the importance for the works of God? Why he is not studying well? Why he is not doing his job well? So why is his countenance falling? A father and mother should carefully watch this. You have to inquire. Son, what happened today, what has befallen you today? A king was looking at the servant who was pouring water, and he said, "Why is your countenance falling today, please come down?" and he enquires. And what, what did the husband of Anna say? What did he say? Why are you not eating? Why are you troubled? Did you not ask? What has happened to you? I am there for you. Why are you grieved? See, very, how clearly he speaks. So is the husband and wife talking like this today? So he has not had food today, let him be like, let him fast and starve for at least one day. So without eating, he is not gonna die. That is how the world is today. Your husband has come. Will you not serve food? No, he is having hands, isn't he? Let him eat. That is what is happening in every house today, and that is why Pentecostal is standing in the middle of the street. How was the old in Pentecost? I'm not talking about Tamil Nadu. In Abraham's house, who was Sarah? Did he say, "Hi Abraham?" Today, that's what is happening in most of the houses. Have you spoken to your husband? He's a turn, yeah, I've spoken. I've spoken to John, it's only two months after the marriage. What did Sarah say unto Abraham? My Lord. Is it not so? What do they call in Tamil Nadu? Stone or a grass, it is the husband. Today, people, do they see that? If you wish to come, otherwise you just go your way. In church itself, we can witness how people's countenance change when they go by two-wheeler. So recently, I heard a news. The pastor spoke like this. So after the meeting is over, the husband asks the wife, "Do you have pastor's number?" No. No, I have a doubt. What happened day before yesterday, the pastor is retreating as a test, then who has reported to him? No, you have got the number from someone and you have informed everything to him. So she said. He said, "I have never heard God speaking like this." This is happening in Tamil Nadu. Have you enquired your family? Have you enquired your family this morning? You desire the Lord should inquire you. Is it not so? The Lord should inquire. Work is of God must inquire. Relatives must inquire. Whom have you enquired this morning? So if a man provides not for his own house and especially for his own family, then he has denied the faith and is worse than an infidel. It is similar to denying God. Denying faith life, it shows. You should speak. They might be greaves. They might be bitternesses. Immediately. You gotta settle all your problems before the sun goes down, that's what the Lord says. You have to pay attention. So by the, by the desk, you have to settle your personal problems with all your spiritual problems, you have to settle before ten o'clock, before you go to bed, because in my bed, I sought for my beloved. So in the same, if you ask ten times pardon to God, that's okay. But you have to keep this mind, retain this mind of asking for forgiveness. And there are certain saints who will say that you ask pardon from the Lord, do not ask from me. When they come and ask pardon to you, you should not speak like as though you are a brilliant, excellent person, but when they say, you have to also say that, "Because I spoke like this, you have reverted like this." The first person who asks pardon is humble. The person who asks pardon first is divine. The person who asks pardon first is gracious. Let him come and speak to me, let's see. He will never come. Then what will you do? So you will again find fault with him, saying that because he is committed to the ministry. You have to inquire your family. You have to inquire your children. What is happening? Where have you gone? So you are not doing any job, then why are you. You have to answer the questions that I ask. You are not going to college? You are not going to church? So all these three places, you are not visiting, but why are you dressing up like a bridegroom and you are just taking the vehicle, filling up fuel and roaming around? You have to either study. Or go to work. Or go to the presence of God. So if you do not go to these three places, you have to stay back on knees at home. Why are you going out? Why are you roaming around? So everyone has this problem. There are two or three in the house. So certain believers, even the head of the family, they do not go to work, but at the right time, they will start, get ready and come out. Therefore, in the spiritual life, you have to inquire your own family. Second Timothy, chapter three, verse five. They put on the form of godliness, but deny the power thereof. What is the form of godliness? Is it removing, shaving of your mustache beard and wearing white and white? Removing the ornaments? They are thinking that these are godliness. So therefore, all the MLAs, all the MPs, they are wearing white garments, it's called as the minister's white. Does it mean that everyone will go to Zion or Jerusalem? White and white is not holiness, it is just the base of holiness. In other words, we can say that that is a sign of victorious life. At the same time, wearing white and white, you should not deny the power thereof. Do not think that because you remove the jewels, you will go to heaven. But you are removing the jewels, but you are fighting at home. You have removed the mustache, but he is beating up your wife. I believe that you will understand the point that I am making. Therefore, you have put on the form of godliness, but you have denied the power thereof. You have to run around and labor. You should not put on the form of godliness, rather put on the power of the godliness. You have to stand for divine healing. You have to stand in the truth and doctrine. You should not deny the power thereof. That is why a few days back. Job twenty-nine. What he says? they put on the form of godliness but deny the power thereof what is the form of godliness is it removing shedding of your mustache and beard and wearing white and white removing the ornaments they are thinking that these are godliness so therefore all the MLAs all the MPs they are wearing white garments it's called as the minister's white does it mean that everyone will go to Zion or Jerusalem white and white is not holiness it is just the base of holiness in other words we can say that that is a sign of victorious life at the same time wearing white and white you should not deny the power thereof do not think that because you remove the jewels you will go to heaven but you're removing the jewels but you're fighting at home you remove the moustache but you are he beating up your wife I believe that you will understand the point that I'm making therefore you've put on the form of godliness but you've denied the power thereof you have to run around and labor you should not put on the form of godliness rather put on the power of the godliness you have to stand for divine healing you got to stand in the truth and doctrine you should not deny the power thereof that is why a few days back I Job twenty nine what he says so he says that the days wherein the Lord blessed me or preserved me and the days of prosperity which the Lord has blessed me with if it is there that is fine he was filled with mighty anointing so but he says that he has three lakhs dead then the godliness is in vain at the same time he is having all kind of riches all kind of property and but still he does not have anointing then there is no problem use of that you should both have anointing as well as blessing that is when the prophetical book of Isaiah it is mentioned that upon your children upon your descent I will pour out my spirit as well as my blessing second Timothy chapter three verses from one to five is mentioned about opposed thirteen faults so if you put on the form of godliness and having these faults within you then you are denying the power thereof Titus chapter one verse six and there is confession but no works a child of God naturally should make confession but it should come in their action today many do not have such a life and one sixteen says they profess that they know God but in their works they deny him what kind of people they are they are abominable disobedient and unto every good work reprobate see how clearly the word of God professes so they can very easily say that I know God I know pastor I know the church I know the word of God these are very easy things that we can say perhaps during the past is because of fear or because of situations you might have denied God and there is another power for this denying that is blessing is it not so so our believers as long as they are normal they are okay when they earn about ten thousand rupees salary they will come to the meeting regularly but when the salary becomes one lakh they are missing do you know how we pray so we are praying that all the penury all the poverty all difficulties all the problems and debts of the people it should be removed our people should be blessed and prosperous according to your word but once they are blessed they are disappearing that is why in Proverbs Solomon says chapter thirty verse nine so lest I be full and deny saying who is Lord so if money abounds that is a problem for our people I met a believer he was a very rich person how can I say that the government has taken away his property whose property I will talk about this person I've told about this person have I told you about this person when I went to his house it was a hospital sheet and there was not even a mat to sit down but later on he conducted a convention itself but later on when the time came in about eight hundred acres of land that he possessed the Lord gave him so much of wealth so exorbitantly he was blessed he did not he did not allocate it properly to his wife and children but he has kept everything in Benami name and therefore he was he has lost had to lose everything now his children have absolutely nothing one day when I spoke to him I was giving ideas saying you could have done like this and that so I he said I was just keeping my mind under control that did not go behind money so he said I have to go to the presence of God that is more important for me so even riches and wealth makes a person deny so you can find so many examples even I can talk about those people have gotten employment as well as marriage and they departed from the church what is the Bible saying a person got married a person purchased land a person purchased a nox now when they called what they said what did they say with wedding they disappear from the church when you call them they said I just got married I am just busy another person said I purchased a nox does it mean that when you purchase a nox you should not come to the church are you milking your twenty four hours in a hundred more he has purchased about five buffalos and he's not able to come to church giving so many excuses and reason the Lord has given it as a sustenance for his for his family to run but when the Lord blesses him with hundred oxen or buffalos what will happen other person purchased a piece of land so will the land run away I have to urgently go and visit the land do not fail deny the presence of God not giving importance to the presence of God weekly seven hours you have to set aside for the Lord
morning three hours
morning three hours for service
for two hours
two hours for the tarrying meeting two hours for the Bible study you have to do it properly because each and everyone has different content so in each and every meeting there is separate life he that forsaken the assembling of the church is cursed when you come to the assembling of the church curse is automatically gone away for whether it's Spirit of God there is liberty when you come to for tarrying meeting you get deliverance he shall know the truth and the truth shall set you free therefore when you come and know the truth there is deliverance you go to brother's prayer what is there so how goodly and pleasant it is for brethren to dwell together in unity go to fasting prayers if you go there what happens this kind of devil does not go out except for prayer and fasting so you go to four o'clock he that seeks it early in the morning shall find me every morning his grace is new you pray in one hour for the night times can't you not stay awake with Jesus watch and pray for one hour that you enter on in temptation therefore each and every prayer there is different life that is what you have to do regularly so if you do not do anything but you come only for Sunday morning service so if they take you to heaven and leave for one day and the rest six days they put you into hell with you will it be okay is it not so it's wrong you got to offer the time to God when you give the time to God God will give his time to you and therefore they have their work and therefore certain people deny God for this purpose uh Deuteronomy twenty eight forty seven so when you are in fullness so you have to praise God and with joy and gladness you have to worship God otherwise it will become a sickness Deuteronomy twenty eight forty seven forty eight so what miserable condition you are pushed into therefore the Lord is speaking to you so whether you have little strength or most strength that's not a problem if you deny not and the open gate is before you and I will give you people I will cause you to escape temptation there is a crown for you I will make you a pillar so I will write my name upon you and this is the promise given to whom this is a promise which God gives to them that deny not you have to understand this properly so because you had little strength yet you did not deny my name because you have kept I place before you and open door so I will give you the people who are in the hands of the clutches of the devil and enemies so I will cause you to escape the temptation which will come upon the world you have a crown I will make you a pillar in my temple I will write my name the name of God on you today you love God once again Peter who denied and left God he once again started loving him you love your brethren so you do not deny his name but keep his word let us all close our eyes three times after denying and the cock crew immediately he came out he ran out of the presence which denies so the Bible says that whichever situation he would deny he ran out of that place so if you go to this place in this place another soldier the scenario in such a situation wherever he goes that he has to deny but when the cock crew Peter ran out of the place and because he denied he cried bitterly so this is the experience of him saying making Jesus so perhaps in our life due to situations due to fear because of so many things through doctrine the word of God and the work of God the faith of God we might have denied you to do various reasons so the 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 meaning of every failure either outwardly or inwardly the reason is denial how many of you agree this so every failure every sin every transgression is a sign of denying God so do you know what I get so three times after denial who grew so for about one and a half how was the cock was growing now for hours together you come out of the situation where you denied one word just kneel down Matthew twenty six twenty five what is mentioned there he came out what does it mean so if you stay in the same situation you will stay in the same condition the same damsel will come and you are with her and the person will come and say you are with her and the person will say your language is similar as long as you stay in the same place you will keep on denying and you will die and perish but now with the word of God say so where he has come so he came out of the environment from where he denied God as long as you stay in that place you will keep on denying you leave the friendship the place where you meet do not go to the place again the place where which is not the will of God where you stand where you sit and where you meet people that is where the denial comes you come out of the situation whereby you deny today you crying in the presence of God Lord I swear saying I do not know you what a drudgery Lord I've become a traitor Lord please pardon me you asked me Lord you say going forward I will love you today as you huck into these words the Lord is going to give you a little strength and because you didn't have the little strength also you denied by now this anointing a little strength is going to come into you whereby you will never deny again the Piladilbia Sabbath and those who say that the Lord the little strength which the Lord had given to Philadelphia if he would give it today to me until the death until my last end I will not deny God pray please raise your hands the Philadelphia church is not one person and there was a large multitude of people but all the people had the little strength and with the little strength they stood firm for God Lord the little strength which you gave to Philadelphia church please give it to our Condevatan church Lord please give it to me give to my wife my husband my children Lord Lord give the little strength to our workers give that to our new souls to our church give that little strength to our young brothers and sisters in the church people who are in backsliding or in rigid condition and in weariness give them the little strength Lord now is the time we have to receive the little strength and you have to stand at the end